Like, actually, everybody is here. So we will start with the pledge. I do have a flag I can share. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. So for attendance, we are all here. Is there any public participation? Looks like we have Marie and Jason, both from the board of selectmen.
Public participation, do you have anything? No.
Okay. Tom's all set, too?
Tom's all set, too.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So hearing none, we can move on to our new business to discuss some of our options that we've heard so far from the Board of Selectmen for the changes that they are going to be requesting from us. Jason, from the Board of Selectmen, do you want to just give a little bit of insight for those who haven't been on? I know that the full meeting is tomorrow, but we just kind of wanted to get a little bit of a head start on a discussion, since we haven't met in like three months.
Sure. So first and foremost, as I understand you, we're gonna have our public hearing tomorrow evening, and then we're gonna either accept your recommendations, your draft report as a final report, or make suggestions for an alternative. Your role thereafter will be to either accept our suggestion or not, but the exchange of ideas is effectively over. So we're gonna, based on what happens tomorrow night, we're either going to take what you guys put forward or pose an alternative. That's it. And I also want to say, you know, it's clear that this should be an 18-month process, and that the work that you guys have done in less than half of that time is just awesome. And I don't want any of this process to come to a conclusion without thanking you for the considerable undertaking that you guys have put yourselves through in order to get to where we are. That said, I think that the Board probably would have liked to have seen some more wholesale changes, but we recognize that the timing won't allow for that. And the options are either extend the whole process and miss the opportunity that a presidential electorate presents, or take a more modest, more moderate approach to updating the provisions in the charter that we're all talking about, and bring that more moderate approach to the presidential electorate. And the selectmen are unanimous in their position that that's the pathway we want to take. We want to make sure that there is a question to put to the presidential electorate on this November's ballot. And in order to do that, this process needs to be wrapped up within the next 12 days or so, which is, that's why we are where we are, and there just isn't enough additional time built in for further deliberation. That said, I don't think that there really is a stated consensus from my Board yet, and I'd invite the deputy for selectmen to opine, too, but I don't think that there is a stated alternative that we have circled around at this point. I think that it would be probably easiest to just take a look at the 2% and see if there is consensus about whether or not that is an appropriate arbitrary number, or if there is a more appropriate arbitrary number, and hopefully come to some consensus on that, recognizing that it really is an arbitrary number. The 2% number is just a number pulled out of nowhere. So if we're not gonna make wholesale changes to the way our budget process works, is that arbitrary number serving the town well? And if so, then status quo it is, and if not, where are we gonna be more comfortable? Does that kind of give you the lay of the land, Madam Chair?
Yes. Sorry, my dog is freaking out because of the storm and jumping on me. Yes, that makes sense.
Oh geez, I'm freaking out about storms now, too.
He doesn't like the rain because he knows that thunder's coming, so he always tries to jump on me instead of me to make sure that I'm safe, because I think it makes him feel better, but he's 85 pounds, so he's not light. So I guess tonight, we can kind of just discuss some options regardless of what comes out of tomorrow, just so we kind of have options as a Board. And I'm not sure tomorrow, after tomorrow, if you guys are gonna give us like a clear recommendation saying, here, do exactly this, and you don't need to go look anywhere else, but I didn't know if we should look into other options tonight.
If, to the extent that you are gonna examine other options tonight, it would be to offer them up during the public hearing process tomorrow, so we could actually recommend them back to you.
Okay.
I also am told that, well, I'll leave it at that. So, yeah, I would suggest if you guys had another idea, that it be something that the consensus brings to the public hearing process. Otherwise, we're gonna end up in this back and forth, and we're not, we're not gonna be in a place where we're gonna be able to advance anything.
Right.
And-
And that's exactly why we wanted to meet tonight, because doing this tomorrow, which it would have been impossible.
It is actually impossible to do it tomorrow night. Under the statutory process that's laid out, you can't. But, what was it? Oh, our intention as a Board will be to have, if we're not gonna go along with what you folks are recommending, we will have an alternative to present to you. We're not gonna, we're not gonna leave you guys holding the ball. We're in this together.
Okay. Sounds good. So if anybody from the Board has put any thought into this and looking into suggestions that we can bring forth for tomorrow, let's go ahead.
All right. I've been thinking about your 5%. And I did, I'm actually in agreement with Jim on this, how it's just, and actually in his words, kicking the can down the road. So I don't think that we should do a number. I think that we should keep the three referendums and just revert to the previous year's budget if it doesn't go through. That will satisfy not having a percentage number. It will satisfy people having a say, and it will get the budget passed in a fairly quick amount of time.
So I also agree with what Jim's talking about. I feel like we've already rehashed all this. We all were in agreement, the 2%. We all said, you know what? We all thought that it didn't make sense. And then we went through all this stuff with Amy and all the percentages, and no matter how we sliced it, I thought it depended on where the COLA reside and whatever we got from the state funding really dictated what happened with everything. So I definitely feel like if we throw an arbitrary number out there, it really isn't gonna make much of a difference, because it all comes down to those two percentages, two different variables, which we all don't have any control over. And I really don't know where to go from there, just like what Jim was saying earlier, kicking the can, because I felt, I feel like we are going backwards. Just my thoughts. Unless we go back to Rick's idea. To keep voting and voting and voting until it goes and gets approved.
I'm with Rick. If we, if we have to do a percentage, then we're better off just voting until it passes, because the percentage is fictional. Both Marie De Souza and Charlie Nardell, I watched the selectmen's meeting, and they didn't, they didn't like the percentage either. Charlie called it a fictional number, and I agree. And I think anything we do it with or base it on will be information that's six to 12 months old, which will not be forward-thinking. So that's, I'm sorry, you know, if we go with the percent, let's go with 10% and have the voters actually look at a budget. That would be interesting. But other than that, I can't support any of these percentages.
Rebecca, I noticed that Noreen Farmer has joined us, and she joined after the public communication period. And I would suggest that if there's no objection, if she had any comments to bring, as she has served in the past on revision commission, that she should be allowed to offer any remark onto me.
I agree, Rick.
Is there, okay. Ruthan, are you okay with that?
That's fine with me.
Tanya?
Yeah, that works.
All right. Well, welcome to our meeting, Noreen. You would like to unmute yourself, and if you have any input to help guide us, we are certainly open to it.
Hi, everyone. Noreen Farmer, 247 Southwater Street. I actually was hoping I'll hear what you guys had to say tonight, so that tomorrow night I'd be prepared at the first selectman's meeting. I watched their meeting the other night and heard Charlie and Marie's take on the percentage issue, and also the issue of people being able to vote, not being taken away from them and whatnot. And over the weekend, I spent a good amount of time, actually, looking back through many, many years of, back to when I was on the Board of Finance, like from 2005 through 2009. And I'm back on the Board of Finance now. And I'm not sure exactly what happened in that amount of years where this referendum got put in and what, and things, you know, the political nature of things. But I think putting the 2% in actually defeated two purposes. I think it's taken away the Board of Finance's real responsibility somewhat in being a Board of Finance. They're now down to kind of, okay, here's the number, and let's try to get as close to a number that we think might pass. And I don't think that's the greatest idea. And I think a lot of people who used to come to Board of Finance meetings while we were deliberating budgets, we had a lot of participation. People would come to the high school, and there'd be droves of people out there. And they'd have concrete things to say about segments of the budget. And I don't see that happening anymore. Now it's more or less a, well, I'm gonna go vote, and I'm just gonna vote no, or I'm gonna go and I'm gonna vote yes, depending on what segment you're in. And I really think that the way it formally was done, I think was more productive for the benefit of the town, because the Board of Finance was taking, I believe, a much more active role in actually looking at all of the finances of the town. They were serving on capital improvement to find out what was going on there. They were serving on lots of, every contract negotiation, every, everything. So they had a really good picture of what was going on, and budgets then were not any much different than they are now. You really had groups of people who were doing the best they could based on our financial structure. And I really think this referendum and this percentage thing has kind of negated anybody's interest in any of it. And I don't think that's how it should be. I know one thing, which is not a charter situation. It's a Board of Finance referendum situation. You can ask at the referendum, why are you voting no? Is it too high or is it too low? So that if it gets voted down, and the majority of the people are saying it's too low, the Board of Finance has a better way of going in, okay, we've got this many people, if it's too high. I really think that the charter originally was set up not for referendums. It was set up for a productive Board of Finance who worked hand in hand with every other department, the Selectmen's Office, the Board of Education, capital improvement, everywhere, to get a really good picture and seriously did the best we could with the money. I would like to see the referendum go away, and if the referendum can't go away, I would prefer that it not have a limit on it. Just let it go until it passes. People have to take a vested interest. They have to say, oh my God, I better show up and vote, to a degree. So it's a tough thing. I'm, it's difficult, and I, you know, I hope, the Board of Selectmen, I'm sure is gonna have some stuff for you, but I just don't see how this entire process has gotten us to be an engaged community in the functioning of our town. I really think it just shoved everybody back into their holes to show up when the vote is and do what they want to do with no guidance as to where do you want to go. So that's about it.
Well, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions on anything that Noreen had said?
I agree with her 110%. I think to get participation, people have to have an interest. And if they think it's gonna be 2%, Mr. Dearborn has said it so many times to me, don't worry about it. It will fail, and it'll be 2%. And I think we need to change that. And Noreen is right. I think voting till we pass is, if they can't deal with the Board of Finance making a decision, then that's the two options. Everything else, we're selling a false sense of security.
I agree with everything that Noreen had to say, except the unlimited referendums. I think if it's unlimited, we're wasting too much time, we're wasting too much money. I think that three is responsible enough.
Ruthan or Tanya, anybody else?
No, I mean, I think that's, that's going back to what we originally presented, right? I mean, go to three, if not, the Board of Finance has a say. But if that's not gonna fly, then I support Rick's idea of just keep going. Although, you know, I do have the same reservations about it costing money, but then it's not limiting to the townspeople. They still have a say, and it feels like they have more skin in the game, I guess.
Personally, I'm still torn.
I don't know if you were in, when I had said this part. Another one of my ideas is to revert back to last year's budget if it doesn't pass the referendums and not have the Board of Finance make a decision on it.
The problem I see with that is if somebody wants the budget to go up, I don't see it getting put into effect. In other words, if we put that out as the charter question, I don't see it passing. If I was a Board of Ed supporter, I would not want that to be in the charter. I, you know, I think we're left with two choices. One is the three with the Board of Finance decision, which, as Noreen said, they used to have more power, and I remember it, too, or go with Rick's idea of voting till it passes. I think anything else, we're not doing what's best for the community, and I really can't back anything else.
If I may-
Go ahead.
The proposal that I made was, had another step in it that you haven't mentioned, and that was that it had a threshold requirement for a turnout in order for the referendum to be valid. So what I had suggested was that if there was not a 15% turnout during the referendum, that the budget as presented would be deemed passed, whether it failed or passed by the vote codes. If there was a 15% plus one turnout, then whatever that result of that referendum was would be the result. If it passed, it passed; if it failed, it failed. And we'd move on to another referendum. The only way the unlimited referendum, to me, makes any sense is if there is a threshold for turnout. I don't think we should ever have a situation where a very, very small vocal minority of any stripe, any political stripe, have sway over the whole process. I think we elect people to do a job, and the voter to make a judgment on the job that those people are doing. If we elect a Board of Finance and they adopt a budget presented to the voters, there's not a sufficient concern within the community that that budget does not meet the town's requirements, then that should be the adopted budget. That was my proposal. The way I see that this is developed by listening to what happened at the Board of Selectmen meeting and the other proposals that have been made here, I think it comes down to really two options. And option, you know, what's been presented to the Board of Selectmen, it does not appear that they're going to accept. So that leaves us with two options. You could either go with the proposal that I put forward several months back, or you can simply do a fallback and recognize that we're doing very minor changes and make some minor adjustment to the percentage, to the percentage increase, and delete those contractual obligations from the consideration of the added percentage. Seems to me those are the only two options that have, that can find support, and I'm not even sure my option that I proposed some time ago can find support at the Board of Selectmen. I think they're looking for a very minor change, and we can either stay with what we had and continue to present that to them, or we can accept that tomorrow night they're gonna make recommendations coming back to us, and then seriously look at whether we just do a minor adjustment in the percentage increase and some exclusions as to what's included in that, in that calculation, leaving out, for example, fixed costs and that sort of thing, and then allowing flexibility to the Board of Finance and how that, how those funds are applied across various departments. That's what I see as the options that present. And I don't think it's realistic. If you limit to three referenda, to go with a 0% increase, adopt the previous year's budget, I suggest we'd be going backwards and-
I agree with that.
Unable to meet the town's requirements.
And Noreen just put a comment in to the group chat as well, saying that reverting back to the previous year will amount in layoffs, contractual applications that have to be met, and all of that stuff. And I totally agree with that. I think taking the previous year's budget is not a good idea, because the town needs to improve each year, and we can't do that without some type of increase of some kind, which the Board of Finance would know what needs to be increased, et cetera. So that's my thought on that one.
The problem with the 15% is, again, you're taking the votes away from the voter, the say away from the voter, because for the budget votes for '17, the voter turnout percentage was 8, 9, and 7%. For 2018, the budget vote was only at 13%. For '19, it was 17%, 14%, and 16%. So most of the voter turnout was under 15%. Voters will go absolutely crazy if they do not have a say. I think that's a horrible idea.
And there you are, Rick.
I would suggest that voters do have a say in that scenario. And if the community, if there's sufficient community concern, that they'll show up and vote, and if less than 15% show up and vote, that that's not a valid reflection of community sentiment for those that, for the community as a whole. So I think it is valid, but I'm not necessarily here to argue that again. But I suggest it's better than what these alternatives are.
My thoughts on the 15% is that if you require it for budget votes, then wouldn't you have to require it for town meetings, too? When the 12 people that show up to meetings, like, they're making the whole say for the town, too, so I don't think that the 15% is flying with me because of that reason.
Town meeting is a different animal than a referendum, number one.
Yeah, I know.
Number two, you always have the option to petition a town meeting to a referendum if you disagree with the outcome. So that's always a possibility, too. Budgets are a different animal than any other vote taken by the town. And to treat it slightly differently, I don't think is any kind of problem at all. My personal, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, a direction we want to go in, let's find something where we can go.
Well, I think, to be honest, with the voters, we were asked to do a task. We know that any percentage at the end of the thing, when they call it a failsafe, it's not real, because of what the treasurer has taught us. We were educated. Now, the problem is, we have people that think we're trying to take their vote. So you either have two options, which eliminates taking of all votes. Well, top point. The first one is straight up vote till it passes, which allows the Board of Finance more participation, and if people don't get involved, then it will be what it will be. The second is our original scenario, which was to satisfy the concern of the cost of the referendums. So I think anything we do complicated will never get through. We put out the most simplest thing, and it became real complicated. People were right on it. So I think we have to be honest. We have to say the percentage doesn't work, it's fictional, we shouldn't be using it, and any other percentage eventually would be in that same position. So using that is no good. So we're left with the other options. I don't see how we can report back any different. I haven't changed my mind. I listened to the Board of Selectmen. That Board of Selectmen represented the entire community, and I think we need to put it out there straight up, one of those two options, and let the community decide. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I have a question. This is kind of in general for anybody that has an answer to it. If we went with the vote until it passes option, what happens if the vote or the budget numbers went below what was like the previous year? I feel like that's not beneficial to anybody. I don't know if that has ever happened. I'm assuming it probably could happen, but that doesn't seem beneficial in any sort of way for the town if that were to happen.
My understanding, this is Jason, my understanding is that that can happen, and it may happen in some communities, the exception being for the Board of Education, which there's a state law called the minimum budget requirement, which basically holds your budget to the, not less than the previous year.
But that's just the Board of Finance, though, not the town?
It's just the Board of Education, not the- It's just the Board of Education, not the town. The town could go negative.
I guess people would have to pay attention to the budget if it was that way, huh? Instead of just saying, yeah, they'll have to say, wow, what are we spending money on? We're, we're spending money on seniors, we're spending money on you. Hey, we're spending money on fire protection. And we got enough, so if we want to do something extra. Sorry, I got a little carried away.
It is not, this is something we discussed before and it's not our job to encourage public participation.
I know.
I beg to differ. It is our job to consider the manner in which the public participate and to facilitate as best we can, public participation. It is part of our job. We're, we're developing a structure for government. And within that structure, our methods to encourage or discourage public participation. And I, I also, the argument that I've often heard of multiple referendums is the cost. Cost has never been a concern to me. Because whether it costs $10,000 a year or $40,000 a year is the price of democracy. If that's the method that we choose as a community to utilize at the small cost pay to have a democratic process that you believe in.
I, I, I see your point. And I, and I do partially agree that a, a portion of our job is to encourage participation as, as it's a structured government. But the, the others, the flip side to that is if it's our job to encourage participation, that must also mean that there's a side that punishes for not participating. And so again, we just need to be clear with how, what's the word I'm looking for? With how, think, how the budget is, is set, not anything else.
I feel like it's the Board of Finance job role to kind of encourage the, the turnouts that come out for the votes and not our job. We're just telling and setting what the rules and the process is, but they, their job is the rest of it. Cause we are only established for a short period of time for the revisions of the charter, but we're not a full established committee that goes on and on and on. So to me, that's definitely not something that we should be trying to do.
Right.
But I certainly see your point, Rick.
And also the Board of Finance's elected positions. So people have put their trust in them as representatives. So, I mean, I, I, I understand the backlash of having the board vote on, you know, the, the budget, but it's not a bad option, really.
I feel like it's the safest option. Go ahead, Jimbo.
I was watching the CIP, he was CIP. And there was discussion about how the Board of Finance didn't give them enough money. Now, it's a terrible example because it's CIP, but it's an example that the Board of Finance took the budget seriously this year. Someone had said it 2.38 or 8.3 increase, which was a minor increase in the scheme of things. I, I, I agree with Ed. I mean, sorry, Rick, I'm sorry. You look so much like your dad, it's scary. We need to vote. And if it costs us $50,000 to do it, to have democracy, I agree with him. I only looked at it the other way because we have so many people in town that are concerned about the cost. But if the cost was not in the back of my head, then I would just vote till the budget passes. And it's up to the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Board of Education, any other board to get out and sell the budget. Okay? That, that's what really needs to be done is get people to participate and not just worry about their little own fiefdom. Look at the forest, quit looking at just the trees. So I agree with you, Rick. And if I had my way, that's exactly what I would have presented. Vote straight through till it passes. But there is the cost concern and I'm trying to find a compromise.
Might I suggest that tomorrow night, there's going to be the public hearing. And the Board of Selectmen is going to make a recommendation. And it, after that, it'll be our job either to modify what we presented or keep what we, stick to what we presented. And then it'll be the Board of Selectmen's job to either pass that on to referendum or not. So until they hold their public hearing and until they make their recommendation, we'll go around in circles and not get anywhere. Cause the question is going to be fairly simple. We either, we either reject the Board of Selectmen's recommendation or we accept it and modify it in some fashion that meets with their concern. So I think we have to wait and see exactly what they recommend. We've kind of, we've kind of crashed this, this out pretty much a repeat of where we were several months back. So I think we see what they do and then react tomorrow.
I agree with you.
Rebecca, can we have a, just kind of a consensus to say where people are with the round supplies, referendums percent?
Yeah. Hey, uh, yeah, so just so we kind of have a consensus, I guess, as Nicole is asking. I guess our options are to keep what we have presented, depending on whatever feedback comes back. Or vote until it passes. I think are two options that we all can maybe kind of agree and compromise on. Or we can look at the other options that have been mentioned tonight. But it sounds like from everybody that they'd rather have it, keep it what we've presented it because killed the horse the first time going through all this. Or we vote until it passes. So, um, I guess out of those two options, let's see kind of which one takes the majority. So Nicole, you're the first one on my screen. What's, what is your opinion?
I think we keep what we've already built.
Okay. Rick?
Well, I'll be interested to see what the Board of Selectmen recommends.
Of course.
And I'm, I'm amenable to trying to work something that meets their requirement. I'm not anxious to do, to do anything that won't make it to referendum. I'd like to see it get there. But if it takes a minor modification in the rate with some, I would do that. I'd prefer we go to referendum until it passes with the caveat that there be a minimum turnout for a referendum to be valid.
Okay. Ruth Ann, you're next on my screen.
I agree with, with Rick. I think we need to see what the Selectmen are going to come up with and, and go from there. I'm not, I, I'm just afraid with the vote until it passes, we're gonna, we're gonna lose some of the budget, you know, and, and it's, it's gonna suffer. But there's, but there does have to be a way to get the people out to vote. And I think Rick said that it is up to the Selectmen and the Board of Finance to keep presenting it and making people aware of why the budget is where it is.
Okay, so you would be in favor of having the caveat with the 15% turnout?
Yeah, I think so. We got, we have to get something to make the people want to participate. But I do think we'd need to listen to what the Selectmen have to say.
Yep, totally agree. Jimbo?
Okay, first, I do agree with what we originally put there. I think it accomplishes a lot more than folks wanted. I do not have a problem with the vote till it passes. However, with the caveat that I do not think percentages should be brought up. They should not be part of any of this. And so that pretty much answers how I feel about all of it. Ties people into a spot. And I think it punishes those that did vote. For instance, if I vote and only 10% vote, then my vote didn't count. And, and that's how somebody's going to look at it. It's the same as when they say the Board of Finance is making the final decision, I didn't get my vote. So I think that's just, you know, if we're going to worry about that, then we shouldn't do either of them. And we should just have votes until it passes. And, but the, the big thing is to impress upon everyone that a percentage does not work. Any number we pick will be old before we even utilize. That's it.
All right, thanks, Jim and Tanya.
I agree with submitting what we have and be curious to see what the feedback is. And if it's just minor changes that we all can agree on, then great. The back fault to that, I would agree with Rick's idea as a default. But I think we have to see what comes up, you know, and see if we can meet in the middle on the, the proposed option because we've been around and around on it, so.
Right, and we're just going to keep going around.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I'm going to stick with what we already presented as my option because I think we did as much research as we possibly could. Certainly interested to see what comes out of tomorrow's Board of Selectmen public hearing and their meeting to see what they have to pass back to us. Hopefully we can all come up with some compromise tomorrow. So.
I'm hoping Noreen will attend that meeting via Zoom and present her opinion as well. It was well said, Noreen, thank you.
I agree. All right, well, with that being said, does anybody have anything else they want to bring up?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, well, I will talk to you guys tomorrow then.
Thank you, everyone, for being able to meet tonight.
Yes, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night, guys.
Thanks, Jason.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.